Well, good evening. I want to welcome you to First Baptist Church and our online streaming service for this Wednesday evening. Since the coronavirus pandemic began, we quickly changed our Wednesday evening programming, and we have been bringing to you a series we've been calling, "Don't Waste Your Quarantine." We've tried to talk about a lot of topics that are really important for you to know about in this season in the world and our country, and in this season in the life of our church. And tonight, what we want to do is talk with you as promised, in the context of a virtual town hall meeting. We're going to have some time here in a little bit to go to your questions and give me an opportunity to interact with you in a virtual way and try to address some questions and concerns that you might have. But before that, I want to spend some time talking to you as promised about what our plan to return to normal is. I announced that we were canceling all in-person worship services until further notice, because I didn't want to have to keep saying, "Well, let's wait another week." Well, let's wait another week. Well, let's wait another week. But we've been working really hard on a plan to get us on a path, taking steps to return to normal, and I want to talk with you about that tonight. But before I talk with you about that, I want to ask you to pay attention with me for just a moment or two to Hebrews, Chapter 10, verse 25. And there, this is what God's Word says. It says, "Not forsaking our own assembling together, as is the habit of some, but encouraging one another, and all the more, as you see the day drawing near." That is actually a passage of Scripture that we've thought about a lot and that I have made reference to with you as one of the kind of guiding factors that we have had in this season. It is important. It's a biblical command that we meet together. And I am thankful to the Lord that we have had all of the kinds of technology that is required for us to be able to meet together virtually. Of course, that is abnormal. It's unusual. It's not the way we want it to go long-term. And it actually reminds us that a tragedy, a global pandemic, can show us what we take for granted. We have not had a regular worship service at First Baptist Church since March the 8th. That's an unbelievable fact. No one could have seen it coming. And here we are in month two without a regular time of meeting together. And when we're away, the way that we have been, it really underlines how much... Hebrews 10:25 is a grace in our lives, to be able to be together, to love one another in that way. It's a command to meet together that in these days has been hard to obey. It's a command that hurts when we don't obey it, because the point of being together is to encourage one another. I love it. It says, "Not forsaking our own assembling together, as is the habit of some, but encouraging one another." It's good for us to be together and see each other's faces and be able to shake hands and give a hug. We haven't been able to do those things together in a very long time. And it shows us, this situation does, that we really do need this encouragement that God provides for. And it's interesting, it's not just a command that we're supposed to keep, but our commitment to it is supposed to increase. It says, "Not forsaking our own assembling together, as is the habit of some, but encouraging one another, and all the more, as you see the day drawing near." We need to have a growing commitment to get back together. And I guarantee that in the lives of most of you who are watching this, this pandemic has helped you have a growing desire to get back together. And so I am eager to talk with you about our plan to return. That's what I want to talk about now. So much has changed in the life of our congregation and the life of our church since March the 8th. We have to be honest that there's some things that are never going to be the same again. We really crossed a line. On March the 8th, as we were all together in the main auditorium, and I was preaching on a multi-generational pursuit of godliness, and the choir and the orchestra was there, and you were all there, we didn't realize what was happening. We did not realize that there were just some things that were never going to be the same again. One of the things that has changed, I just want to say to you, is our plan to right-size the campus, right-size our physical plant. We just need to be honest that with the way property values have changed, with the economic constriction and a number of other factors, we are not assuming as a leadership team that we will be able to pursue that plan in exactly the same way. I don't have details for you tonight about how that is going to change. I'm working very hard on that and meeting with leaders in our church and leaders in the community about that. So I'll have more information for you on that in the days and weeks to come. But that's just an example of one of the things that's going to have to change. And it's one of those things we didn't know about. It's one of those areas where man makes his plans, but the Lord determines his steps. And we'll trust the Lord on that and rejoice in what He gives us. But one of the things that we know is that we need to return as quickly as we safely can. It is not normal for our church to be spread out. It is normal and good and right for us to be together. And so we want to return as quickly and as carefully as possible. We have, as a team, worked out a three-step plan for our church to return. We've arranged the three steps in color codes like a traffic light for red, yellow, and green. And the three steps are unique to our church. And it's based on a number of factors. It's based on our need as we phase in, as we have a controlled return to normal. It's based on our need to control crowds so that we don't have hundreds and thousands of people roaming around the hallways here and in small alcoves the way we have in the past. It's based on the need to keep our facilities here carefully sanitized for you and your family, so that this is a clean place to be. It is also based on our careful work with various officials and with many other churches, both in Jacksonville and across the country. We've tried our best to accommodate our unique plan to the sort of best practices that are formulating out there. And we think we have a good and a responsible plan to return. I just want to thank, as I go through this, the members of your pastoral and ministry staff who have worked so hard in an extraordinary season to try to figure out what the best way is for us to get back together as safely and as quickly as possible. So many people working with other churches, even officials in the city, working together on just problems that we couldn't even have imagined two and a half months ago, that we'd be solving together. And I'm very, very thankful for the hard work put in by our team and want you to be as well. As I go through these phases, I want to let you know that there is no set time limit for each one. This is very important, because if you look at the federal regulations for phasing in the economy and that kind of thing, a lot of times the phases are tied to two-week increments, 14, 15-day increments, something like that. Our phases don't have predetermined time links tied to them. So what we'll do is, I'll announce to you when we are entering into a new phase, and then we'll be in that phase until it's time to enter into the next phase. So I just want to let you know that as we go through. Just because we start one phase doesn't mean we're inalterably on track to move into the next phase. So let me start with our three-phase plan. And the first phase is the red phase. The red phase. This is a step away from the quarantine and self-shelter-in-place that we have been in for quite some time. And it's the first step towards normal. Let me tell you what happens during this very, very modest first step. We are going to continue with no corporate gatherings in the red phase. We will have our services be exclusively online. One of the big changes in the red phase, however, is that our hourly workers with onsite responsibilities will be allowed to return to work. This is a big change, because the guidelines from the governing officials required us to send our employees home. We asked everybody to go home, but we have a number of employees who can work from home. We have hourly employees with onsite responsibilities who don't have work unless they are here. And so in the red phase, those hourly employees with onsite responsibilities can return to work. We are still going to ask all of our employees, all of our staff who can work from home to do so during the red phase. And also during the red phase, our hiring and spending freeze will continue. As soon as this happened, I instituted a hiring and a spending freeze, and that will continue in the red phase. I want to let you know, as a demonstration of our progress as a church, that we actually entered the red phase on Monday. So right now, we are living in this phase, and we're excited about that. And we are looking to the yellow phase. That's the next step. And that's what I want to talk to you about right now. And this is where you are going to start to get excited and feel encouraged. In this phase, in the yellow phase, as a church, we will begin to meet together in person in very limited ways. We're going to have a controlled re-entry. And I want to tell you several of the things that are going to happen during this phase. First of all, we will return to live, in-person worship services that we will carefully regulate and control. Let me talk about what that's going to mean first at Nocati. At Nocati, when we enter the yellow phase, they will go to two services on Sunday morning, with the first at 9:00 and the second at 11:30. Pastor Spencer will preach live at both of those services. We were on track to switch from me preaching at Nocati to Pastor Spencer preaching at Nocati. That was supposed to happen a couple of weeks ago, if we'd been meeting in person. So this is a return to normal, except with two services, him preaching 9:00 and 11:30. The 9:00 service of Nocati will be livestreamed online at fbcjacks.com. And also, Nocati will have a live Wednesday service. That's Nocati. Let me talk about downtown. Downtown, when we enter the yellow phase, we'll go to two services that are live and in person on Sunday. The first service will be on Sunday morning at 10:30, and the second service will be on Sunday night at 6:00. So those are our normal service times. They'll be live and in person. And both services will be in the LMA. So we won't return to meeting in the main auditorium. We will return to the LMA where I'm sitting right now. And those services will be two identical services. It'll be the same sermon. It will be the same music. So that's going to be one of the ways that we're going to be able to accommodate as many people as possible. Two identical services on Sunday morning and Sunday night in the LMA. I will continue our Sunday series through Matthew. And where I've been preaching the Love and Glory series through the Bible on Sunday night, I will... Since I'll be preaching the Matthew series on Sunday morning and Sunday night, duplicate sermons, we will move the Love and Glory series to Wednesday night. So I'll begin preaching that on Wednesday evening at our normal 6:30 services. And the Sunday and Wednesday services of our downtown campus will be streamed at fbcjacks.com. Now, that's the way we're going to structure our services. But let me talk to you about how we're going to manage our attendance at these gatherings. We can't open the gates wide and let everybody come who wants to. We're going to have to control our population. And so let me tell you how you will be able to attend and to know that we're going to be limiting the crowd. We're going to ask people to register to attend a service at fbcjacks.com. So once we enter the yellow phase, we will come to you with information about how you go online. And you can register as a person, or you can register your family, or you can register a group. We'll give you information about how to do that at fbcjacks.com. And once our capacity for a given service is full, we will cut registration off. So you would be able to attend a Sunday morning service or a Sunday evening service in those two identical services, or a Wednesday evening service, the Love and Glory series. Next, we want to encourage attendees who are able to register for a service in the following ways. We are going to ask you to self-enforce social distancing. In our services, we'll have assigned seating for the people who register, so you'll know that you'll be seated an appropriate distance from other people. But as you're coming in and going out and interacting with people, we are going to ask you to self-enforce your social distancing. We're not as pastors going to turn into police officers and get people in trouble. We're just going to ask you, even if you feel comfortable people coming up to you, that you would not go up to them. We want to respect those boundaries and let people feel like they're safe here. We want to ask you to stay at home and watch online if you are uncomfortable in groups, if you are immune-compromised, or if you have experienced symptoms of illness within the previous two weeks of the service that you are attending. So that's the way we want to encourage you. Couple other things about our return during the yellow phase is we will not be offering any food or beverage services at all on our campuses. Not coffee, no kinds of food, no meals at all during this yellow phase. We also will not be having choir or orchestra rehearsals. And so choir and orchestra will not be a part of our worship services. There's no way for us to have those rehearsals with the social distancing that's required and keeping everybody safe. So in the yellow phase, even though we'll return, we won't return with choir and orchestra. We also will not be offering, as a church, any childcare. Now, we want you to come. We want you to register for the church service. If you have children, we want you to come into the normal service. But if you feel uncomfortable being in the normal service with your children, then we're going to have a special room for children, a child-friendly room, that will be available for families who might feel more comfortable there. And so that'll be available for you. We also, in the yellow phase, will not have Sunday school. There's no way for us to keep those facilities sanitized. There's no way for us to regulate the attendance at that. And so we won't have Sunday school in the yellow phase. But we want to encourage our excellent Sunday school teachers, who've been doing a great job of member care and reaching out to folks and checking on them and making sure they're okay, and having the virtual Sunday school meetings that you've been having. We want to plead with you to keep that fellowship up as well as you have been doing until we're able to return. We are working the best we can on the right way and the safe way to return to regular Sunday school meetings, but that won't happen in the yellow phase. We also want to continue to encourage you to have creative fellowship and discipleship in the yellow phase. So if you've got people that you're discipling, if you've got people that you're walking with, I heard a story the other day about a group of people who got some food to go, and they all met in a parking lot, and they just sat in the parking lot and talked and ate and enjoyed one another's company. We want to obviously encourage you to do those kinds of things in the yellow phase. Also, in the yellow phase, we're going to be working with our volunteers. We need volunteers. We need a lot of help with volunteers for our church services, for cleaning up. And we're going to be communicating with our volunteers about that. Also, last thing about the yellow phase is our staff will return to fully normal operations. So not working from home, but working in the office. And so that is the yellow phase. The headline of the yellow phase is that we get to be back together. It won't be the way it was. We will limit and regulate our crowd at our campuses, but we will be back together. The question is, when will we enter the yellow phase? I'm not going to announce a date right now, but I can tell you that we are working on entering in the yellow phase by the end of this month. We're watching the system. We're monitoring closely. We don't want to get out in front of the governing authorities. But as a leadership team, we believe we will be able to enter the yellow phase by the end of the month. I'll keep you posted on that if that changes. And of course, I'll let you know with enough notice to begin to prepare to join us. But that's what we're looking at right now today. That gets to the green phase. The green phase represents our last planned stop on the way to getting back to normal. And what's going to happen during the green phase? Well, we will continue in the green phase with the multiple services that I talked about. 9:00 and 11:30 at Nocati, 10:30 and 6:00 in the evening downtown, and live Wednesday services. We'll continue those multiple services, but we won't ask you to register for those services. So you'll just be able to come and go without any kind of regulation. We will also reinstitute Sunday school at safe locations and in safe ways at the green phase. You have moved out. We've already moved out of the Lindsay building and the admin building and the main auditorium classrooms in preparation for our physical plant realignment. And we won't be returning to those Sunday school classes, but we will be returning to Sunday school and we'll make you aware of that at the right time. We also will restore our childcare here at church, but we will restore childcare with a capped capacity. So childcare will come back, but we'll cap the class sizes to match the amount of volunteers. Also, in the green phase, we will evaluate our food service. This is something that churches our size are spending a lot of time talking about, and we still need to wait and see what best practices are going to be and what we will be able to pull off here. So we'll evaluate that in the green phase. We will encourage, when you come for service, that those services be touch-free, that we not shake hands and hug and that kind of thing, even though if you're like me, you're a hugger. We're going to encourage touch-free services. And also during the green phase, we'll return to our normal next-generation services, our normal student ministries that happen during regular service times. And also in the green phase, we'll be evaluating our ability to restore the choir and the orchestra downtown. So that's going to be about as normal as we can get without having just no restrictions at all. And the question is, when is that going to happen? And the answer is, none of us know. We think we're going to be in the yellow phase here in just a few weeks, by the end of the month. But we just don't know when we'll be in the green phase. We're going to be evaluating that throughout the yellow phase. We'll be paying close attention to what the governing authorities are advising and just how things go as we increase our worship attendance. So that is our plan. We have worked really, really hard on it. What we want is to be a church that is together as much as possible, but is together in a way that you can expect and anticipate is done with safety in mind. So that's the red, the yellow, and the green phase. We're in red now, and we're looking to yellow towards the end of the month. Now, with that said, I'm going to ask Shawn Perone to join me up here. And we're going to go to your questions. So we gave you the opportunity to send in questions, to ask a pastor. Actually, I don't know all the ways that people were encouraged to send their questions in.
Carrier pigeons.
Carrier pigeons. And presumably, there is a way that they can continue to submit questions if they're watching online and want to ask. Tell us how they can get a question in if they so desire.
Okay. You can comment on the Facebook Live, and you can also email us as well, and I'll be getting updates from those questions. All right, you ready?
I guess.
Okay. First question. Please clearly define the official FBC position on the subject of Reform Theology and Five Point Calvinism.
Okay. So that's a fascinating question, because I want to say maybe every single one of these town halls, if not every single one of them, a lot of them, probably most of them, there's been somebody ask a question in that vein. So of all the things that I... Well, I just spent a lot of time answering this question. I've answered every time you've asked. I spent a morning one Saturday with our deacons talking about it for an hour and a half or two. So I've talked about this a lot, but I'm happy to answer it again. And so please clearly state or clarify what our church's position on Calvin, Five Point Calvinism and Reform Theology. So First Baptist Church is not a reformed church. We are not a Five Point Calvinistic church. We are a Baptist church. That has always been the case. It is the case at this moment. And there is nobody that has any plan for it to be anything other than that. If you want to know what our church believes and what we are committed to, then there are a couple of things that you can do. You can examine our Statement of Faith. Our Statement of Faith is the Baptist Faith and Message. That is the statement that this whole church adopted a long time ago. It's the Baptist Faith and Message 2000. That was drafted by a committee of leaders in the Southern Baptist Convention. It was chaired, the committee was chaired by Adrian Rogers. Actually, one of our very own former pastors was a member of the committee that drafted that document, and it was embraced by our whole church. And so that is a statement that says in writing what our church believes. So you could look at that. The other thing, if you want to know what our church believes about these kinds of things, you could listen to me. And so right when I became senior pastor of this church, we started working immediately, and as soon as we could, we introduced a systemic, church-wide evangelism and outreach program that our church had not had in a very long time. Every Sunday, I preach that Jesus lived, died, and rose for sinners. Every Sunday, I plead with people to repent of their sins and trust in Him. Every Sunday, as a whole church, we are encouraging you to share your faith and point people to Jesus Christ. And the very mission statement of our church is that we are reaching all of Jacksonville with all of Jesus for all of life. So we are not a Calvinistic church. We're not a reformed church, and we are not going to be.
Helpful. Thank you. This is a very personal question that someone is eager to know. They want to know where you bought your shirt.
Oh, are you being funny because we're both wearing green?
Yeah, that's my question. Yeah, sorry. Someone did want to know if we matched on purpose.
We didn't. Actually, we talked about what we would wear, but we clearly didn't talk carefully enough. And you didn't buy me the shirt. I think my wife bought me the shirt.
Yes. Okay, here's another one that someone has submitted. Is registration in the yellow phase just for the church's records? Some states are making churches register for their records to control the virus.
So I'm not sure that I understand the question. So if somebody has a better idea of what's happening with the question, then let me know. But no, what that is, is we just, the reason we're going to have you register for the service is so that we can know how many people are going to be here. What we can't do is say, "Hey, we're having a church service on Sunday morning. Have a church service on Sunday night. Come if you want to." And then we have 2,000 people down here. That would blow past our capacity. So that is just our ability to know, "Hey, look, here's how many are coming." And once we have reached that, we cap it, and so that you know you're coming to a socially-distanced service, and we know we are receiving you at a socially-distanced service. Do you think I answered the question?
I think that's good. I also was reading other questions to try to understand.
You think that answered it?
But, okay, sounds good to me. Someone else will write in if we didn't get it carefully enough. Here's another question related to that one. In the yellow phase, what about visitors that do not know about the registration to attend?
We will taze them and drag them off of the facilities.
They have to wear a green shirt.
So we have a plan for that. So if a visitor shows up, they don't know what's going on. They just want to come visit our church. We will not turn away visitors who didn't know about the registration process. We have accommodated that in our planning.
Okay. Got a lot here coming in. I'm trying to understand this question. I think I got it. Okay, hold on.
Take your time, Shawn.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Just the internet is watching. It's okay.
That's okay.
Should I tell a joke?
Do you want to include your link in the show notes for where you can buy a good green shirt? What are... Okay, here we go. "The extra time at home has brought back some old sinful habits." And then they list several habits. "What are some resources to fight sin, especially when I'm so discouraged that I'm dealing with this again?"
Oh, well, so first of all, let me say, I really appreciate the question. And I just want to encourage you, whoever you are, whatever's going on, whatever is behind that, I just want to encourage you that the kind of heart that would be broken over sin and want to fight it and run from it is the kind of heart... over sin and want to fight it and run from it is the kind of heart that Jesus is pleased with and that should really, really encourage you. And so I really appreciate the question. It's a big question, because I don't know exactly what you're talking about. And so sometimes the battle that you wage against sin is a really, really specific battle based on the specific sin that you're dealing with. But just in terms of a big question, I would, a big response to a big question, I would say, first of all, all of our resources online with our preaching, with our singing, those are all things that you can use to just rejoice in the Lord and grow in the Lord. Lot of the sermons that I preach about are engaging with sin and how to overcome it. There is a really helpful book by Stuart Scott called Killing Sin Habits, or Killing Sin Habits, by Stuart Scott. It's a small, little book that gives you some really practical strategies for how you can grow in the faith and fight sin. What I would say to you is, the main way I'd want to encourage you right now, apart from pointing you to those specific resources, would be to say that Jesus Christ takes on flesh, lives a perfect life, dies on the cross, rises from the grave to give you power to defeat sin. Jesus doesn't just come so that you'll be forgiven. He comes so that you'll be forgiven, and we're thankful for that forever. But He also comes to make you a new person. And so you can look to Jesus and believe in Jesus, trust in Jesus, and fight sin as a person who's resting in who Jesus is and what He's done for you.
That's good. So this is a question that came in. Does ACBC Training for Counselors clearly state that you cannot tell every counselee that Jesus died for them because you don't know if He did or not?
I don't think I understand. Ask me that again. I couldn't follow.
Yeah. Does ACBC Training for Counselors clearly state that you can't tell every counselee that Jesus died for them because you don't know if He did or not?
Well, so, no, that is, well, I don't know what I'm saying now, too. So ACBC, so I ran ACBC before I was the, in fact, the way I came to First Baptist is I was the executive director of this biblical counseling organization, ACBC. It's a biblical counseling certifying organization. And First Baptist Church, back in 2011 or 2012, had decided that they wanted to be committed to biblical counseling, and they wanted ACBC training here for their counselors. And so they reached out to ACBC, and I came and started working with the church and started teaching here some and preaching here some and speaking at the pastors' conference. And it was that that led to the invitation for me to come to enter into a pastoral transition. And so I left ACBC, and now I'm serving as senior pastor. But, so in my former life, as the executive director of a parachurch counseling ministry, ACBC is the only counseling organization that requires, as a matter of counseling ethics, that counselors must speak about Jesus. Every other counseling organization that's Christian in some sense makes it questionable or else unethical to speak about Jesus. But at ACBC, that is a ministry that requires, hey, if you're going to be a faithful counselor, that means you've got to talk to people about Jesus Christ, who is the healer of their hearts. And so that is one of the reasons why First Baptist wanted to enter into biblical counseling and to be affiliated with ACBC before I got here, because what they wanted is they wanted to have a counseling ministry that was as committed to the Bible as the pulpit was. So they wanted a preaching ministry and a counseling ministry to line up. So, so ACBC counselors, which is the ministry that certifies counselors at First Baptist, are required to share the good news of Jesus with counselor, with counselees.
Another question, this is all over the map here. Will we ever have another service in the main auditorium again, even if it's just one?
So that's a great question. I didn't know we were going to stop having services in the main auditorium when we did. So, so I, you know, I'm thinking about James 4 here, where you've got to be careful and trust the Lord in how you speak. But what I will say is, I certainly believe that we will have at least another service in the main auditorium. We, it's not on the radar when that will be. We're trying to get through this COVID-19 business. But, but insofar as it depends on me, and there isn't some other divine interruption that none of us can see right now, I am sure that we will have at least one more service in the main auditorium, if not more. But we're just not, we don't know how to plan for when that will be right now.
Okay. What have been some of your favorite memories or habits for your family that have come out of this time at home?
That's a great question. So, and it's a great question that gets to sort of the weird tension of where we are. On the one hand, all of our lives have been interrupted, and we want to get back to normal. And the main function of this conversation is to communicate that we're working as hard to get back together as we can. So there's been a lot of loss in this season. But it also points to the fact that there's been sweetnesses and wonderful things about it. So, so the great thing, the best thing about it for me has been the slowing down of life that, you know, I was, I was operating at a speed that before, before this happened, that honestly probably was, it certainly wasn't sustainable, and it probably wasn't even, wasn't even good in the, in the short term. And people that, that are members of our church and leaders in our church, but not employees of our church, but who hold me accountable, were going, you gotta, you gotta slow down. And I was going, okay, which fire do you know want me to put out here? And so I'm just going to trust the Lord, and trusted the Lord all the way into a pandemic. And so just, we just slowed down. And so that's, just the slowness in and of itself was really nice for me, but also our kids had to slow down. And so they've been pulled out of school since before spring break. And so I have a great family. I have a great wife, I have great kids, and we get to eat lunch together. And when I'm like coming off a Zoom call meeting, or I'm taking a break from sermon prep, I can like go downstairs in my comfy shorts and stretch in the front yard with my daughter and push her in what we call our Corona swing. We put a swing in the tree to play on while, while we were home more often. There've been walks together and feeding ducks and chasing alligators. We tried to apprehend an alligator.
Did you catch it?
It was scared of us. It was scared of, scared of Chloe.
Was it because of your green shirt?
We weren't wearing a green shirt. Chloe, Chloe terrified that alligator, so it didn't want any part of us. So we have just had a sweet, a lot of sweet times as, as a family. Playing games, playing Ticket to Ride.
That's a great game. Which board do you have?
It's the American one. I didn't.
Good. There's like, you know, the Netherlands or the...
We have the American one. Go USA.
Amen.
But we love everybody who's watching in other countries.
Amen.
All right. So that, yeah, it's been, there've been some really, really sweet things.
That's good. What are your favorite promises in the Bible?
Favorite promises? You know, the one that springs to mind first is the one in Hebrews 13, that I will never leave you or forsake you. So you, we just think about what's included in that. So, so that I will never leave you or forsake you means, that's God saying, I'm with you. So you can't, you can't leave or forsake someone that you're not with. But God is with us. In order to make that promise, He's saying, I'm with you, which is a miracle, because He doesn't have to be, because we're sinners. So, and I don't want to say we're, I'm a sinner. I'm, I'm painfully aware of the, of the sins in my heart, of the sins in my life. And, and the tamest one separates me from Christ forever. But, but to have a God who says, I'll be with you, and not just, I will be with you, but I will never leave you or forsake you, in, in ministry, even at, even at First Baptist Church, which is the best church in the whole world. You don't get to see them very often, because we're all isolated and off sheltering in place. But, but even, even in this situation, ministry can be very, very isolating, and you can feel, you feel alone, and you can feel, man, is there, is there help here? Is there anybody who understands? And, and then God says, hey, because of who Jesus is, I'll never leave you, I'll never, ever forsake you. Surely is connected to 23rd Psalm, surely goodness and mercy will follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. So just the permanent presence of Christ with me, who does not deserve it, but gets to just relish the hope.
That's good. Okay. I feel kind of silly asking this question now, but I didn't know that was your favorite promise. Can someone lose their salvation?
No. No, I mean, I probably, by the time the question gets asked, there's probably more behind it than that. So the reason the question gets asked, can someone lose their salvation, is sometimes it's a very, very personal question. You've got, whoever asks the question, you could be out there, maybe it's a person who asked a question about sin earlier, and you could be feeling so separated from Christ. You could be so overwhelmed with sin that you just feel like it's over. Your goose is cooked, and God is, is done with you. And you know, there's, there's a couple places. Hebrews 13, I'll never leave you or forsake you, that's the promise of Jesus Christ. That's not about you and your sins, that's the promise of Jesus. In, in John, chapter 10, you read John, chapter 10, and it's very clear, you're in the double grip of God, as I call it. Jesus is holding you, the Father is holding you. And so I, if it's asked from somebody who's struggling with sin, I would say, since you didn't do anything to save yourself, you can't do anything to unsave yourself. If, you know, if I could lose my salvation, I would have already lost it. I mean, if it were dependent on me, and if it were dependent on you, it would already be gone. But God loves you. Jesus died for you, and His promise of keeping you is secure. Sometimes it gets asked, though, not from that kind of personal spot, but from the more theoretical spot, and hey, you know, we see people who, it looks like they're in a real season of sin. And we would say, well, you can't out-sin the grace of God. Romans, chapter 5, says, where sin increases, grace abounds all the more. But even more pressing, some people say, well, that person left the faith. They, they left the faith. They said, I'm not a Christian anymore. And in First John, it says, they went out from us, that it might be proved that they were never of us. And so if you have somebody that has renounced the faith, and that's their final answer, it might not be their final answer. It could be they're in a season where they're just in sin, and they're resisting grace, and they're fighting against conviction. But it could be that they're weeks or months, or maybe years away from, from repenting. But if someone renounces the faith, and that's their final answer, then, then what we would have to say is, well, they never really knew Christ. But someone who really repents of their sins and who trusts in Jesus Christ, no, can, can never lose their salvation. And if you say yes, then it's actually blasphemous, because you're demeaning the blood of Jesus Christ.
That's good. That's helpful. Okay, this is a question from, related to your recent sermon. In the sermon notes from this past Sunday night, you wrote, every sin we commit will be punished. Is the Christian treated the same, the same was as the lost by God? So I think they're saying, is the Christian treated the same as the lost by God?
Okay. Yeah, so, so the statement, every sin will be punished, is a true statement. What is up for grabs is who gets punished for it. So your sin will be punished by God, and you will be the one punished in hell forever if you don't repent of your sins. And so if you don't repent of your sins, the prophet Ezekiel kicks in, the soul that sins shall die, and you will bear the everlasting penalty for that sin. But if you repent of your sins and trust in Jesus Christ, in His life, and His death, and His resurrection, if you trust in Jesus, and you should do it right now if you haven't, then you will not be punished for your sin. But that doesn't mean that someone doesn't get punished. What that means is that Jesus was punished for you. So the, the suffering that brought us peace was upon Him, is what Isaiah 53 says. So by His wounds, we are healed. And so somebody's going to be punished for your sin. The question is, will it be you, or will it be Jesus? And it will be Jesus if you repent of your sins and trust in Christ, and He will never leave you or forsake you, and you'll have hope and joy forever.
That's good. Okay. There's two questions related to this. I'm going to lump them into one here. What is the covenant that leaders are being asked to sign, and are we also going to be asked to sign it?
The covenant that leaders, is that like the student?
I think it has to be. I don't know, sure, but it has to be.
So, so the only covenant I'm aware of that leaders are being asked to sign is, is a covenant for our high school and middle school ministry leaders. That is a covenant that our pastors over those ministries have asked folks to sign for a long time. I don't know how long. And so, and there's, it's called the Milestone.
Yeah, the Milestone and Millstone was the one in the high school department.
Milestone and Millstone is high school.
And then Dan has a different covenant. I'm not sure what, I think it's just called the Middle School Covenant.
Pastor Dan has the Middle School Covenant. So, so those are covenants that we have always asked our leaders, we want, we want our student ministry leaders, who are volunteers, to be the best of the best and to be committed to the work in a way that is characterized by maximum faithfulness and integrity. So we are just continuing the practice that has been in place for a long time of, of asking people to sign those. If you're not involved in student ministry as a, as a lay leader, then I'm not aware of a covenant that anyone's being asked to sign.
And I'll just piggyback off that. If you would like, if you're a parent and you would like to serve, or maybe you're not a parent, but you have a heart for students and ministry, I mentioned this, and I mentioned the covenant actually in a previous video to the parents about a month ago. We'd love for you to sign up. We'd love for you to serve, whether that's, you're gifted in teaching, or whether you're gifted in handing out nachos. You can go to the Serve tab online and fill out a form, and we'd love to have you involved. And we also would love childcare workers, too, for the upcoming services.
Yes, childcare workers. I'm going to say some more about childcare workers here in a minute, but once we get into the yellow and the green phases, we're going to need childcare workers for sure. So be thinking about that and praying about that.
Okay. Here's another one. This time in isolation has allowed time for reflection, removing busyness, and reestablishing priorities. It's been a time of refreshment and renewal. How do you see this transformation changing our church collectively and how we seek to reach all of Jacksonville with all of Jesus for all of life?
Yeah. That's a great question. I love that question. So let me answer it in a couple of ways. First of all, I want to answer it in a way that just understands that God gets to do what He wants. And it's, it's really amazing to me and humbling to me. It's humbling to anyone in our leadership, whether you're a lay leader or a staff leader, that we can come up with all these plans, we can, we can nuance all these things, and we spend a lot of time coming up with plans. And I think that's a mark of faithfulness and good stewardship. And then, you know, right in the middle of March, God just sends in a pandemic, and He shuts everything down. And so I think what you got to do is you got to just trust the Lord in this, and you have to say that the Lord does good things. He doesn't do bad things. I think that the most remarkable demonstration of the power of God in a fallen world is His ability to turn horrible things for good. That's how powerful and in control of the world that He is. He just takes our evil and our bad, and He turns it for good. One of the interesting things, as you read through the Bible, is God really never, there's never a moment in the Bible where something wonderful happens that it wasn't preceded by something terrible. So for, for the Christian, for you and I who trust the Lord, there, there's a very real sense in which, when we're in the midst of a hard time, we need to brace ourselves for something really good that's going to happen. It's, it's a test of our faithfulness, it's a test of our trust, and it's just, it just never fails that terrible things... just never fails that terrible things precede wonderful things in the Bible. So, so first of all, I want to say is, this, this gives us hope and trust in the Lord. Having said that, I think a couple of specific things that we can be on the lookout for. I think, as I was mentioning at the beginning, when I was talking about Hebrews 1025, this kind of separation has taught us how sweet it is to be together. How sweet it is to be a part of a fellowship, where Christians are just seeing each other, we're together, we're loving on one another. And I think there's going to be a lot of us who have taken that for granted for a long time, and we're not going to be tempted to take it for granted again. I also think that it's, you know, the Lord is doing it. The Lord has plans that we didn't foresee. The Lord is going to modify a lot of the plans we've made for the future. There's going to have to be tweaks to, to things. And that just means the Lord was doing something wonderful that we didn't know about, and we didn't see, and we're going to trust him for it. Another thing is, and I think about this a lot. I think in a, in a culture where you're talking about death all the time. I mean, the reason we're locked up in our doors, the reason I'm talking to a screen, and there's nobody in here except the people who work here, is because, it's because of the fear of death. We don't want to die. And so I hope that this will remind us of how frail, how fragile a thing life is. And I'm praying that it will stoke our flames to be a church, that hey, the reason we're here, that, you know, there's no reason to be involved in church. There's no reason, there's no reason for God not to just evacuate us to heaven when we get saved, except that he has chosen that people come to know Jesus as they hear about him from us. And so I'm hoping the very fear of death and the isolation will encourage you and encourage me to be more faithful in sharing the good news of Jesus Christ.
That's really good. We have eight minutes left, and I have.
We have announcements too, so.
Okay.
So do what you can.
I think this question is really, really important. God will quote, never leave me nor forsake me. If that's true, why does he allow bad things to happen in our life?
Well, so the reason bad things happen in the midst of a promise to never leave you or forsake you, is to prove that the promise is true. So, so this isn't the Bible. But you remember the, you remember the poem, Footprints in the Sand, where, you know, he had a dream, and he's, all the events of his life were in the sky, and he was walking on the beach, and there were two sets of footprints in the sand, and one was the Lord's, and one was his. And every time that the moment of his life was a really painful, difficult, this is not as poetic as the poem was, but, but every time the, the moment in his life was really painful and really hard, there was just one set of footprints, and not two. And so he says, Lord, you've been with me all my life. You've taken care of me. You've watched over me. Why was it that in the moments of trial, you left me? And he says, I didn't leave you in the moments of trial. The reason there was one set of footprints in the sand during the hard moments, is because it was then that I carried you. God is kind to us. God is kind to us. When he takes away our false hopes, when he takes away our worldly comforts, when he takes away our lusts, and the things that we rejoice in, and take pride in, that are not him, he's kind when he takes those away, to prove to us that he is there, that he is the one that holds us up, that he is our hope and our strength. And so, so I, I would say, the main way you know that he never leaves you or forsakes you, is in that hard time, when you're making it, and you don't know how, that is what the grace of Jesus Christ feels like, as you experience his strength in your weakness.
That's good. Okay. We'll do one more. We'll end on a personal note. Who are some of your biggest heroes in the faith?
Okay. Jesus.
Now, that's, that's good.
You don't want to critique my answer, do you?
You're, you were correct.
Okay, that's the right answer. Maybe I shouldn't even make light of that, because what we've just been talking about, the only hope.
The author and finisher.
He's the author and finisher of our faith. So, so Jesus has to be the, he's the Alpha and the Omega.
You can't say the Apostle Paul.
Okay. So I will say, I'll say, I'll say two answers. First is Billy Graham. And I love and respect that you've got one man who, he would say, I'm, I'm not making any judgment about him, he would say, and did say, that there was nothing very special about him. But the Lord just equipped him with great power, and he had a solitary focus to see as many people know Jesus Christ. And he, he devoted his life to that. And I admire that, and want to have that same passion. The other thing about Billy Graham is his integrity. I mean, financial integrity, sexual purity. I mean, he just had unimpeachable character, unimpeachable conduct, and to make it to 99, as he was when he died, and, and have, have what is said of you, be that you loved Jesus, you told people about Jesus, you didn't steal, and you didn't cheat. That's, that's remarkable, and I love it. You know, the other, the other heroes I would say is, and, and some of you, some of you who know me, know this. First Baptist Church is the best church in the whole world. If you're watching this from another church, I'm not slamming anybody. I just, I love these people. And the people at this church are who they are by the grace of God, because of the ministry of the Lindsay family, Homer Lindsay Senior, Homer Lindsay Junior. And I look at what, what was going on in the 1940s, where you've got a church that's the brokest church in the Southern Baptist Convention. And over the course of 50 years of the ministry of, of these men, Lindsay Senior, Lindsay Junior, became one of the largest churches in the entire country, and just renowned for its faithfulness as a church of the Lord Jesus Christ, faithfulness to the word of God. And I am so thankful for that heritage. And one of my favorite things is to hear you tell your stories about Homer Lindsay Junior and Homer Lindsay Senior. And I want to meet these men. It feels, it feels like a true loss for me, that, that I've never, that I've not met those two men. And so, so when I go to heaven, I want to stand in line to meet my big hero first, Jesus. There are a few other people that I want to check in on, but, but in my top five, six, or seven, I want to meet Homer Lindsay Senior and Homer Lindsay Junior. All right. Well, I hope we have been able to answer some of your questions. I hope we've been able to help you anticipate that we're praying, hoping, trusting, and believing that this month, we're going to be back together as a family in some way. So stay tuned for more updates on that. Let me make you aware of a few announcements as we close out. First, Reach 904 Care Packages. This is our next phase of our Reach 904 effort to try to be salt and light in this city during the pandemic. We want to encourage you of our, in our congregation, to help with care packages. Write handwritten cards, and donate snacks, and activities. Directions and details are available at fbcjacks.com/reach904. Next is Serve. Childcare in the Future. We are going to need a lot of you, we need a lot of you to volunteer, start thinking about volunteering now for our entry into the yellow phase. We need even more of you to start thinking about volunteering for childcare as we get ready for the green phase. We need more volunteers to serve in our preschool ministry. Nearly 40% of our volunteers are senior adults, and we're not able to anticipate that they will be as available as they have been in the past. And so I want to ask you to think and pray about how the Lord would lead you to volunteer for our childcare in the future. Last thing, we are really excited that we're going to be announcing, we're announcing an Everyday Grace podcast. It's a, it is a new story podcast from our church. It's a video story series called Everyday Grace. And we want to tell the stories and the testimonies of the members of our church, and the good things, and the exciting things that God is doing in your life, as he equips you with his grace. And to let you just know how to have a taste of what's coming, we've got a clip for you to watch, that'll give you a preview of it. So watch that clip, and then we'll be done. And until Sunday morning, grace be with you all.
You, you're back here in the United States for a little while, and there is quite a story to tell behind why you're back here in the United States. And the Lord cared for you in a really amazing way, and enabled you to get back here for a season before you're able to go back there. And so can you just tell me a little bit about the last few months, how the Lord has brought you from there to here, and how he's taking care of you in the midst of that?
Yeah, it's been a very wild 2020. So I've been in six countries since I left East Asia, been on 14 flights. I've just been bouncing around. And the Father's provided me, provided for me each place I've gone. And thankfully, like, I was able to get back here to the US. But it's been really cool looking back. I can see how God's hand was on me, and like, how he was just like, guiding my steps and leading me to where he wanted me to go. And like, each place I went, each of those six countries, like, there's a purpose for being in each one of those places, even though at the time I was like, what is going on? Like, what am I doing? So it's cool to like, look back and see God's hand on my life.
When, when you face the anxiety of living in a place where the gospel is greatly opposed, and when, when you see all the difficult things that Christians in that context are facing, how, how has the Lord helped you in, in your own heart, as you've been experiencing those things?
Yeah, I think it's about having the right perspective. So for me, a lot of times, I'm afraid, like, oh, what if I get arrested? Or what if I get kicked out? Or what if the police come bring on my door? But it's like, God is worth it, and having that perspective that, like, God is in control, he's sovereign. And I'm reminding myself of that every single day. And it is hard. There's a lot of times where, where I fail, and I just give in to just worry. And, but like, we have to understand that, like, God is sovereign. He does have a plan. And his plans are good for us. And there, when I feel that low point, it's just like, oh, it just bogs me down. But I always think of like, the God's promises, and how like, he gives us a peace beyond our own understanding.